So we have everybody but Mr. Garvis and I just texted him so he, I know he's coming. Welcome. My thought is we will, because Summit County went back on the red list today, which means we have too many COVID cases. Kind of like when they put a state on the red, you're not supposed to go there. Summit County hit that again today. So maybe, maybe in October, we'll be able to get together live again. Mr. Garvis is having some issues with his modem. He'll be there ASAP. So to get us started out, this meeting, is Mark here?
I'm here.
What we have, first of all, is always the call to order, the Pledge of Allegiance, and then the public comment, but we forgot, we need to approve the minutes and that's usually done right off the bat. Jeff, if you'll do the approval, and Vinnie will be the second.
Got it.
Jeff's on now.
Did we, did we get minutes?
We'll go through the proclamation.
Did we get minutes?
Yeah. You didn't get them?
No, ma'am.
I don't remember getting them either.
You know what? I must not have sent them.
You're echoing what was said.
I said, if I didn't send them, then that was my fault. I apologize. I thought that I sent them with everything.
Yeah, I swore I read them.
I was gonna say, I thought that I sent them, too.
Did you just send them to Jan?
No.
I'm looking at the ePak.
I would have sent them to everybody, so.
Can you do me a favor? Just resend them out.
Let me see where they're at.
Okay, well, she's looking into that. The proclamation for Mr. Cole, is Jeff gonna be on the phone, Mayor?
Yes, he's supposed to be.
All right, I gotta harass him. I've known him since he was little. Him and my sister went to school together. She was at his house all the time. So then, after we go through that, we will go into ordinance number 37. We forgot to do that one last time. It was not on our agenda. That one is Jessica's, with Dave's is the second. That is for the opt-in for the natural gas program. We had the public hearings. We did one, two, three, and the other one, we just need to do, this is the corresponding one, that has to go with it. Oh, look, Amanda's in outer space. Damn, that would change my background. So unless anyone has issues with that, we can do it for third and adoption. Is that okay?
Sounds good.
Hey, Jan, didn't we already have a first read on 37?
We did.
Okay.
We've had it, yeah.
So you just need a second and third. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, that's what we need, second and third.
Do we know the date for first read?
It's on there. I can pull it up right now.
Hold on. We did it, hmm, I don't have a date, wait.
Here, I can.
June 11th?
Oh, right.
Is it that agenda? 35, 30, yeah, June 11th.
Hmm, yeah, that sounds right.
June 11th. And then we did the two public hearings. So we need to do second and third on this, Jess.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Is ordinance number 52. I will take that and for tonight, Jeff, you'll be the second for anything I do. So Mayor, if you'd like to speak to 52?
Well, I think Counselor Ventura's trying to ask, I think this is his legislation, so I don't know if you want to give that one to him, and he could probably explain it better than I could, because he's been working on it.
Who?
Mr. Ventura.
I was not aware that, as the President of Council, it would be nice if someone would tell me. Mr. Ventura, this is something I know, we had a person who has since sold their house, was really the impetus behind us. So Vinnie?
Yes, observing all of the cities that have upped their penalties for passing standing school buses, I thought we should get in line with that and put a little more punch behind that. I did work with Mr. Goodetti and Ms. Severin on this issue, and I got basically a thumbs up from both of them.
Mark, would you like to expound on it, please?
Sure. So our existing ordinance has one penalty essentially for somebody who failed to stop for a school bus, that penalty's a $500 fine. The max $500 fine is consistent with a third-degree misdemeanor maximum penalty. We didn't actually specify that it's a degree misdemeanor penalty in the existing ordinance. So this changes that. It does specify a first offense is a third-degree misdemeanor, and then it elevates it all the way up to a first-degree misdemeanor for subsequent offenses by the same individual in a certain period of time. So if somebody commits a second failure to stop offense within a one-year period, it elevates it from a third-degree misdemeanor to a second-degree misdemeanor, which increases the penalties.
Any questions? Okay, tonight, Vinnie, you'll offer Jessica your, Vinnie, second.
Ms. Tully, can we just give the public and the rest of council a chance to look into that more if they so desire and just keep, make it as a first reading tonight?
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
And just leave it there, Jessica, because then you'll still be when we go into the second and third. The next one up is the road program. I will take that with Jeff as the second. Mayor or Mr. G? I'm not sure who wants to speak to this one.
Yeah, I can speak about it, Ms. Tully. Yeah, this piece of legislation is for the road program to proceed with crack seal work on State Route 82, and I'll give you a brief. Got some feedback there, sorry about there. I'll give you a brief description as to why this piece of legislation is for you. These, the crack sealing for State Route 82 was originally bid this spring as alternate items in the contract. We chose not to accept those alternate items this spring because of the financial uncertainty of the coronavirus situation. The good news is that as the season has progressed and the work has progressed, the road program has incurred some savings, some cost savings. So we'd like to apply those savings to performing the crack seal work on State Route 82. We can do this crack seal work without any additional cost to the original budget, so that's a good thing. Obviously, crack sealing is always a good thing. It keeps our good roads in good condition for as long as we can. We certainly want Route 82 to stay in good condition. It's the main road right through the middle of town, and this piece of legislation will also allow us to restripe the lines after we crack seal.
There's supposed to be an exhibit with this. Amanda, do you have the exhibit?
Yeah, it should have been sent out with that email.
No, we just got the ordinance.
Oh, my gosh. I'm telling you, something's been going on here. Let me, got it? Okay. I was gonna say, something's been going off my stuff lately with all my restarts and updates, things are going nutty.
Jessica, the exhibit, I believe, was simply the original bid tabulation from the original bid this spring.
Hey, man, I need all the, I need all the information right in front of me.
Jan, you're muted.
Yeah, Jan, you're muted.
Jessica, did you see it? Because when she reset, she reset the package.
Yes, I got it. It was part of the email, I just missed it.
Yeah, she sent them instead of in the correct format, so, okay. Any questions? We have the empty chair from Mr. Nodavich. Dinner's calling. If none, I would assume we would like this as one, two, three, Mr. G?
Oh, yes, I forgot to add that. Yes, I would suggest that one, two, three, so we can proceed with the work before the season is over.
And if we're like Denver, that season's right upon us, right? They keep talking about we're gonna have an early one, so I'm hoping they're just like they do on every day's forecast. Wrong. It's a job we all should take. Okay, moving right along then, ordinance number 54. Mr. Goodetti, would you like to speak to that?
I'm sure that one, the administration has requested to be not introduced and pulled from the agenda. I believe Mr. Vares and Mr. Collins are working on getting revised quote, or have got a revised quote for the software, which may obviate the need for any competitive bidding for the
So we will not put that on the table at all. It will not be offered, so we'll remove that from the agenda.
Correct.
And that means we need to renumber the last one. So if you just mark that one off for the agenda, the next one, which said 55, will now be 54. That'll be me, only because if I have to talk to my neighbor one more time, and the neighbors down the hill, although Mr. Jean moved to the top of the hill for this reason. Mr. G?
Yeah, I can speak to this one as well for a moment. This is obviously to authorize the engineer to prepare the plans and the mayor to conduct the public bid, a piece of legislation we have to have naturally before we can have the bid. It would be my recommendation that once the city actually takes possession of the property, we move right into a public bid, and it seems that soon the city will be taking possession of the property.
Okay, so we're waiting for the final papers to be signed for the property. Once that is done, then we can enact this resolution? Is that what you're saying?
No, Ms. Tully, I think we can enact the resolution right now, and then, once the the city has actually taken possession of the property legally, and finally, then we can actually conduct the public bid. But we should do the resolution tonight. Yeah, council can move forward with it. The city has actually signed the requisite purchase agreement, permanent easement agreement, and we drafted the quick claim deed, and once we get that from the diocese, we can move forward. I should have a timeframe by Monday, and hopefully we'll have it next week, quite frankly, so we can go ahead and get it.
Is that Monday of this year?
It is, this month even.
Sorry, I sent you guys pictures of the trees. They're just like falling like crazy downstream. All right, so if no one has, we'll do one, two, three. That'll be me and Mr. Garvis. And remember, Amanda, that is now 54. And the next one up will be changed to 55. Since removing the one, this is for Highland Road. Jeff with Vinnie as the second, and I gather, Mr. G, this is you again.
Yeah, I'll speak one last time, I guess. This is to allow the city, authorize the mayor to sign the application and allow the city to apply for outside funding assistance to OPWC, Ohio Public Works Commission. Apply for funding to repave Highland Road, or what we're now calling Highland Road Phase Two. This would be the portion of Highland Road from Valley View Road heading east to the Twinsburg border. It's a stretch of road that's in rough condition, as some of you may know. It's got a very high traffic count. A lot of people drive that road every day. Those are factors that I believe helps us with our scoring, helps us with our application, increases our chances of receiving funding, so it's a good application, good candidate, I should say. And one note for the council, you'll, a very minor typo you'll see on the legislation, it actually says program year 34. This will actually be, it is actually now program year 35. So my suggestion would be, I guess, make a motion to change 34 to 35. Would that be the appropriate thing to do, Mark? Yeah, that's correct. Just a simple motion to amend.
Jeff, did you catch that?
Yeah, I did. Do we amend it before offering it, Mark?
You can sort of get introduced, you'll offer it first through third, then you'll make the motion to amend, and then you'll make the motion to pass opposed.
Okay, thank you.
And you want to make sure that you amend in both the whereas and section one. Because it makes it ugly if we put it in one and forget to do the other. Then we have to come back and fix it again, so. Is that work anticipated to be done this year?
This Highland Road Phase Two, no. If we receive the funding, it would be a 2021 project, so next summer.
Okay, and we'll have an agreement with Twinsburg, because that little bridge is gonna be part of that, isn't it? The bridge that's to the east right after the development?
No, Ms. Tully, this would, the plan, again, if we receive the funding, would be to pave Highland Road from the Valley View Road intersection to the Twinsburg border.
That is in Twinsburg border after the bridge.
You mean the railroad bridge?
Yes. I'm going east towards Twinsburg.
Yes.
And the bridge is pretty small, and that is nothing but semi-traffic all day.
Yeah.
So we're gonna make sure that we have a coordination with them.
Oh, well, we would.
Coca-Cola, Pepsi, I'm trying to think of all the ones that come down that road all day.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, now I understand. Yes, we would coordinate with our neighbors. Yeah, there wouldn't necessarily be any type of an agreement. We wouldn't be, I don't think it would be a joint project, we wouldn't be working in Twinsburg, but yes, administratively, we would, of course, coordinate with our neighbor in a situation like that.
Yeah, because we're gonna have to coordinate to think of some etour. Because you're actually gonna have to close that portion, because that, to be able to pave. So we need to coordinate, where do we route everybody?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, there's no question, there would be plenty of coordination, traffic, and otherwise to take place if we get to that point. I don't want to get too far ahead of us. We need to get the funding assistance first, so.
Yeah, it's just something to put on the burner, because I don't think anybody wants to see all that traffic coming down 82.
No, it's a rough traffic zone, there's no question about it.
Yeah.
One of the reasons we need to pave it so badly.
Yeah, and those people, poor people.
Yeah. Oh, Thunder Alley, I think, was the term they used to use over there, right, Johnny?
It's a mess.
Yeah.
So Sean, Sean moved away from the water problem up to that development, so he has the traffic problem when he tries to get out of his street.
He can't win, can he, Ms. Tully?
No, he's such a good, his family is so sweet, like, yeah.
Yeah, he's a nice guy, yeah. His, our daughters go to school together.
Okay, so if I don't hear anything else from anybody, we'll do one, two, three with the And again, that is now resolution 55. Moving on to 56, Jessica with Dave as the second. Mayor, if you'd like to speak to this, or Jessica, I'm not sure.
So we put out to the public that we had two openings on the Parks and Rec Commission probably at least 60 days ago. Ms. Luxco has expressed interest in it, and that's why you're seeing the legislation today to put her on there. Her resume was sent to all of you for your review as well.
And who resigned?
There was two people, Jessica, help me out on this.
Ken Greer and Kevin Hunter. Kevin ran out of time, and Ken actually has moved out of state, and Ken was actually a really long-term, long-serving member on the committee. So we'll miss him, and Kevin.
Do we have more than one opening, then?
Well, there is one left now, one open.
So if you know of anybody who might be interested, tell them to take a look at the city website. It's an awesome committee to be on. You create the future for the parks and the recreation, and whatever else is gonna happen to keep us healthy, is how I look at our Parks and Rec. Do I hear any questions?
That's also under the HR tab on our website, so just so everyone, if anyone wants to peruse that, it's under the HR tab.
Any other questions? If none, Jessica, one, two, three. Okay, then our last piece of legislation, which is now 57. Dave, if you'll take that one. Mr. Finley, and I'll be the second. Mayor, if you'd like to speak to this one?
Sure. So Mr. Ferraro had actually initially requested to be on the Parks and Rec Board, and he had sent over his resume. After reviewing his resume, he has a pretty vast engineering background, and I had suggested to him perhaps the BZA would be a better fit for him. At that point, he agreed, and that's why you're seeing this here today.
Any questions? If there are none, again, one, two, three, and adopt. Then the last thing I want to remind everyone, when we go to adjournment, Vinnie will be the adjournner, and Jessica, if you could be the second. I know it's real hard to get a second on adjournment. And of course, no one ever wants to say aye, but, okay, before we move along, is there anything else? Mr. Garvis, I believe you had something?
Actually, I have a question about the minutes. Did we decide we're proceeding with them and which date? Because I don't see them.
No, we're not gonna proceed with them. Good question, thank you. I was gonna bring that up. Since not everybody saw them, we will not proceed with them, so we will not offer minutes. And we'll hold them for the next meeting, because we can always do multiples at one.
Okay.
Mrs. Tully?
Yes?
Pretending to ordinance number 53, who was assigned to that, please?
Me and Jeff.
Thank you. Also, I would like to apologize for not giving you heads up on number 52. That won't happen again. I am working on other things, but they're not, they haven't gone anywhere just yet, so I'm still researching those.
I would still appreciate, if anyone wants to move forward, this is the opportunity to put those ideas on the table, to get everyone's feedback, questions, any thoughts that they may have, so that it is a group effort of representing residents and making sure that, again, I always say, I may not think of something that Jessica thinks of, or I may not ask the question that Dave asked, so it's an important issue there. Okay, sorry, Mr. Garvis, about the minutes, thank you. You don't have to do that.
Yeah, you're fine.
So, Jason, you have this weird shadow that comes up. Looks like he's Batman, doesn't it? Watch it. It's cool. I thought maybe it was Jessica's dog has come to your house, but we haven't seen her baby today. Okay, Mr. Garvis, you're up.
Okay, so I just wanted to bring up something that came up on Facebook recently. Myself and Mrs. Brandt, we both interacted with a resident who asked a question about campaign signs, and I quoted what I thought was the old timeframe with campaign signs, and then did a little bit of digging and found that the date had been changed a little bit, and actually didn't have a really good understanding of it. And then we spoke to Mark about, via email, about what the sign ordinance really is with respect to campaign signs. And in our ordinance that we've adopted, it's actually referred to as a non-commercial opinion. It doesn't actually say campaign sign anymore. And the reason I was bringing it up here with all of council is I was kind of surprised to find what I found, and I thought I would just point it out to everyone and determine what council's thoughts are on this. But basically, and Mark, please interrupt me and correct me if I say this wrong, but the way that the ordinance reads today, a resident in our city with property that wants to put up a non-commercial opinion sign can have one sign up throughout the duration of the entire year. There's no time limit on that one sign. But if they want to put a second, third, fourth, or fifth sign up to a total of five more, or a total of six, those additional signs can't be put out until 30 days before the election, and they, those signs, after the first one, have to come down, I think it's one week following the date of the election. It doesn't say election in the ordinance, it says the corresponding event, but I think if we're reading between the lines, we know it means election. And I just, I was kind of taken aback by that, because I've, I mean, any of us driving through town have probably seen there's a lot of people that are expressing their opinion in the upcoming election, and I could see a scenario where someone might have more than one campaign sign up, maybe a presidential choice, and then maybe they might have local candidates, or maybe even in the future, they may have issues that they want to support, be it levies or statewide issues. And I thought it was a little strange that you can't put a second sign up until 30 days before the election, and, but you can have one sign up all year, and then I could see that becoming a little bit confusing with people that have corner lots, you know, if they have, with where it's considered two different front yards, right? And I could just see enforcement of this being a nightmare. And I'm not coming here tonight with a specific proposal on what we could or should do here, or, you know, we, maybe we just leave it alone and leave it as is. But I thought I'd bring it up, because a resident did bring it up, and I was kind of surprised that it plays out the way it does, and figured I'd take a litmus test of what the rest of council thinks, or if nothing, we'll just move on.
Mark, can you talk about why this was changed? I don't remember if you were.
This, yeah, this was just modified last year, actually, and that was a result of some recommendations that came out of Planning Commission to council and the work of Brian France, who really, they did the bulk of these recommendations, and I, of course, took a look at it and went through some of them with them. You know, the only comment I really have is that enforcing sign ordinances is always a nightmare in every municipality, and it's always a headache for everybody involved, frankly. It's just the nature of the beast. But certainly, you know, council ultimately sets the rules through the ordinance, so you do have the ability to revisit it. I believe Mr. Finley was pretty heavily involved in, Mr. Finley, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Planning Commission spent a fair amount of time going through everything and looking at these recommendations, as did Mr. France, and the purpose was to enhance the constitutionality and decrease the amount of potential challenges that could result, because there have been changes in case law. So that's why you do see the elimination of specific designations for a sign, and the dichotomy is more commercial and non-commercial now.
Mr. Finley, did you want to add anything?
Nope, that's basically all it was. Uh, because of the Supreme Court, uh, case that, that he referred to, we have to have the ability for a sign to be up all year round. The, the rest is pretty much unchanged.
Is there still legislation or language within the legislation where they can place the sign? Cause it used to be you couldn't put them in the, um, tree lawns. Or so many, so many feet from the street, because there are some right now that are real close to the street. Did that get removed?
I believe the, um, the rule has always been there and I believe is still there that you cannot place the, uh, signs in the right of way.
It's, it says, um, shall be set back a minimum of five feet from any public right of way.
Okay. Anybody else have some thoughts?
I took a look at, um, at, at Twinsburg and Hudson, just to see what their sign ordinances were. Twinsburg's is exactly the same as ours, um, for thirty days and must be removed within five days. Uh, Hudson's is different. Theirs is, you can have as many signs as you want all year round, however, um, they can, they can only be a total of, I think, ten square feet. So, uh, so that kind of limits, you know, the number that you end up being, being able to have with Hudson's, so.
Does it limit what the topic can be? Or what, I mean, does it have to be political or can it be?
It, it just says non-commercial opinion.
It's, I'm sorry, what is it?
It says non-commercial opinion, so like Mark was saying, it's content neutral.
The ci- the city can't look at whether, you know, it's supporting candidate A or candidate B, or it's regarding a specific issue. The city can't delve into that level of review for a, for a sign.
So let me answer this, because this is one we get all the time. Somebody gets work done at their house. The vendor leaves a sign. Does that sign have to go down after thirty days because it's a vendor sign, which is basically considered a commercial sign? Cause it's selling a commercial business? Or is a commercial sign only something like Wendy's has their sign, you know, Taco Bell has their sign? What's the fine line definition there?
Well, so every question comes down to a specific review of the code and I can't give you necessarily an answer as to the hypotheticals on the spot here without having the code in front of me. Um, but generally it depends on whether it's commercial or non-commercial and whether the property that the sign is on is residential or commercial property as well. Those are kind of the main factors um, that funnel you into the correct regulations to follow.
So could we get more information of what, what makes up a non-commercial sign versus a commercial sign? Just what that definition is? Cause we're not just a national versus business, but.
Yeah, it's, it's in the code.
Cause that, you know, when you say non-commercial sign, everybody's like, what does that mean? It means I can't say eat at Subway, or does that mean I can't say Subway, or, yeah, you know, it's a little confusing. If you could do that for us, Jeff, would that help?
Well, yeah, I, I had no intention of opening a can of worms. I just thought it was timely that we discovered this and the resident literally asked this in the past forty-eight hours. And I thought since we're here in, um, work session, it would be easier to just bring it up and see if anybody thought that that second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth sign was odd, but I didn't know Twinsburg did it identically. That's interesting. I'm really not even advocating a change. I just thought I'd bring it up since a resident brought it up and I'm totally on board if we just leave it alone. If we choose not to even entertain changing it, I'm okay with that.
But I think what would be good is for us to have a clear definition.
Oh, no, I agree. I agree with that. I think.
Although I, I sent him off to Mark, he's.
I, I think this.
He's never busy, so.
I think the improvement signs you're referring to, like, you know, Joe's gutter comes and puts new gutters on my house. If I'm reading it correctly, and I'm obviously not Mark, I think it says for a period not longer than two weeks from the date of the improvement, so it's probably a two-week sign if you're advertising that you helped somebody fix their house.
Yeah, I think that one needs clarification because it used to be you could only keep it up for so long and then you had to take it down. But I don't want people misreading.
Yep.
And in an election year, it's better, Mr. Garvis said you brought this up so we can have it clarified.
Yeah, and, and the only, the only reason it caught me off guard is previous to the most recent change, you could put a sign up sixty-five days, days prior to an election. Now that's kind of different if you want to put more than one sign up, but again, I'm not advocating either way.
So I'm going to put seven signs up and see if anybody comes to my house. Oh wait, they're on my.
I'm already, I'm already emailing Chris Hall as we speak, Jan.
What do we do with Christmas time? No, we don't, I don't see him anymore, so I can put up what I want now, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Garvis, for bringing that up, though.
No problem.
I would ask if, because I don't do Facebook every other day, questions like this really should go to the administration for clarification. And if they need to refer them to the city website, it basically has everything and anything on it. If you can figure out where to click, you just got to be able to figure out where to click. And if not, we can all go to, oh, wait a minute, Jason just went to New York. Are you in New York or where are you at?
Yeah, I'm in my studio apartment. I just took a jet over. So I got here pretty quick. I'm, I just keep changing my backgrounds because you said the other one I was disappearing in or something like that, so I changed the background.
I actually stayed in an apartment in New York City that had a view like that.
Cool.
She married a wealthy man, a friend of mine, so it wasn't my apartment, that's for sure.
Jan, Vinnie has a question.
Yes?
Uh, you asked that I, uh, bring up if we have the time this evening, so that everybody had a chance to hear it and possibly have input on the other two, uh, things that I'm working on. If you would like, I would briefly give you a description of those.
Okay, we got seven minutes before we get our restroom time.
Okay, um, we need to update our tobacco laws so that they coincide as a city ordinance. Right now with the changes, um, if we have to do any enforcement action whatsoever, it would automatically have to go down to Stowe Muni Court. We could not do it in a mayor's court. Um, I, I suggested to Mark and I asked him about, uh, about that. We're not going to sit in, we're not going to have a policeman sitting in the subway lot looking for sixteen and seventeen and eighteen-year-olds buying cigarettes or two. But if we have a major complaint that we have to enforce something, I try to keep it, I would imagine we try to keep it here and deal with it locally. Um, the second thing is dri- a driver inattention ordinance, that we should make that a primary offense. Um, you know, we shouldn't have to wait for an accident to happen or a major complaint of, of, uh, people on their cell phones not paying attention, um, people working on computers, uh, being in law enforcement for as long as I have. You cannot imagine some of the stops I've had to make and the excuses and, you know, I even had a person ask me that it, it, you know, didn't know it was against the law to, uh, not pay attention, so to speak. And when I explained to that person, I asked, I says, should I wait till you get into an accident and hurt somebody or yourself? And that person looked at me and said, you know, it, it makes perfect sense to me. She says, now I understand. And, uh, because of her understanding and because of our conversation, she was not cited. Because the Village of Oakwood does have a separate ordinance where it's a primary stop or for failure, uh, to maintain, uh, full-time attention. So those are the two that I'm working on, uh, this is Tully and the rest of council. I, I think we need to update those a little bit to just make, uh, things easier for us as a whole and safer for us as a whole.
Mark, are you working, um, by looking at the state legislature? Cause I know when I drive on the state roads, there are signs that you can be cited, so. I, there's state law or not.
Yeah, we, I started looking at the tobacco one. I haven't started looking at the primary versus secondary offense one, but you know, we'll obviously take a look at what Oakwood, uh, has done based on Vinnie's comments, though.
Hey, in No Fun Netflix, they tell you that this movie has bad language, violence, and smoking. I just laugh because Greg smokes, so I told him, it's got to quit. It's a bad influence on him, but, uh, thank you, Mr. Ventura. Keep us posted, Mark. Keep us posted of where we're going with both of these, um.
Will do.
And we'll see what's going on with it. Anything else? If not, you got four minutes. You can darken your screen, run off, get something to drink, or go out to.
All right, it's seven thirty. I'm going to get started. Is everyone ready? Hearing no objections? Thank you and welcome to the September tenth council meeting. It is seven thirty PM. Well, Ms. Traska, please call the roll.
Ms. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Finley?
Here.
Mr. Garvis?
Here.
Ms. Tully?
Here.
And Mr. Ventura?
Here.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is public comments. Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move right into a proclamation.
Pledge of allegiance, Mayor.
Oh, I am so sorry. I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Let me back this up. I always work off my agenda. What, let's do the pledge of allegiance first. How about that? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much for pointing that out. I didn't have it on the agenda, so it threw me off.
You're welcome. Thank your flag reminding me of it.
Okay, now I will do the proclamation. So it says, whereas Jeff Cole has served this community for almost forty years, hired at Cable Nine Community Focus in nineteen eighty-two and served as executive director for over twenty-five years, served as staff liaison for several community access programs throughout the years, responsible for countless in-studio and on-location local interviews and feature stories. And whereas Jeff Cole has earned the friendship and respect of his coworkers and citizens with whom he has come in contact through the years in our city and has exhibited an exemplary work record, good-natured personality, and delightful sense of humor. And whereas Jeff Cole was passionate about promoting high school wrestling on television, extended high school sports coverage to include a myriad of both boys and girls athletics, broadcasted its first Cable Nine show, high school football games, and in nineteen eighty-two with Cole starting as the, as the announcer, covered the Ohio, Ohio High School State Wrestling Tournament for nineteen years, organized and hosted the Cable Nine Wrestling Drive for Nordonia, Aurora, and Twinsburg for twenty years. And whereas Jeff Cole was instrumental in transforming hometown video Cable Nine into a nationally recognized and regionally respected local television station, now known as Community Focus, hosted popular local shows including Coach's Close Up and the long-running Mayor's Reports, produced Network Nordonia, Buzz Cuts, Summit County Government Affairs, Working Today, Making Sense With Your Money, Public Matters, and Florent- Philanthropie Today. And Cole will continue on as the color commentator for what will be his thirty-ninth year of high school football in two thousand twenty. And whereas his professional, unbiased, well-informed presentation of the news has provided a priceless service to the citizens by cooperating fully and reaching the public with special bulletins, announcements, and presentation of the news in general. Now therefore, I, Nicholas Elmonar, Mayor of the City of Macedonia, do hereby proclaim Thursday, September tenth, two thousand twenty to be Jeff Cole Day. And extend my personal best wishes, those of the city council and our citizens, to Jeff Cole and his family for continued health and happiness.
We, we love, hold your sign up, Jeff. Jeff hasn't figured out how to unmute. Um, I'd like to, you know, knowing Jeff forever. Um, I also want to say, someone was on the wrestling team in high school and we drove down to watch the tournament. So Jeff got a start before doing the announcing for the state wrestling tournament as a wrestler and was a state qualifier. Twice, Jeff? Also, hmm, if you ever go in the high school and take that tour of the Athletic Hall of Fame, whose picture is posted there? Mr. Cole. So he's been active since he was in high school, middle school, actually, in caring for the community. So we won't say how long that's been, but, um, I don't have that many fingers. Jeff, I, I just want to say, from all of us, after being on the Cable Nine Board for years and then every time you've done an election year, it's always been professional. And, uh, all of us have had that interaction in some way, shape, or form. So congratulations and sorry your days during COVID, but we celebrate with you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'd also add that I've known Jeff for quite some time now and he's been an absolute pleasure to work with and during the Mayor's Reports, he makes it, he's always made it, you know, sometimes it's very stressful when you, when you sit down and have to talk about a lot of different topics, but he always made it so that it was very easy to talk about and, uh, very comfortable and I, I think he had such a finger on the pulse of the community that it made it nice when we sat down to talk, because there's a lot of things that he would bring up that we would, we would converse about and was important for the public to know, so Jeff, I thank you for that as well and I hope to see you soon.
Jeff, maybe enough. Before Christmas, we can all meet at the, at the Willow. Right, council? We'll, we'll hoist a beer with them.
Okay, moving on now to pending our new legislation. First up is ordinance number thirty-seven.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to, uh, give ordinance number thirty-seven, twenty twenty for its second and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to establish an opt-in natural gas program pursuant to section four nine two net, two nine, um, dot, I'm sorry. My eyes are in crazy. Four nine two nine dot, uh, two seven A one of the Ohio Revised Code jointly through NOPEC as an up, as a NOPEC number.
Mark, can you give a brief explanation? I know this had to do with the legislation that we had in the past, but can you give a brief explanation on this?
Yeah, so this is simply creating an opt-in, uh, portion of the opt-out program that we've had in existence since I think the early two thousands. Um, council has already passed the legislation that actually creates the program rules. This is actually creating the program itself, or amendment program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And what is your pleasure?
Mayor, I ask that we pass and post ordinance number thirty-seven, twenty twenty, and the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Epstein.
And Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-seven passes. Ordinance number fifty-two.
Mayor, I would like to present ordinance number fifty-two, twenty twenty, for its first reading only.
By title only, Mr. Ventura?
By title only, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending section three, three, one, dot, three, eight of the qualified ordinance of the City of Macedonia relative to stopping for school buses.
Mr. Ventura, do you care to, uh, go ahead?
Um, first of all, I did consult with, uh, Mr. Goodetti on this and also, uh, Ms. Severin, our, our city prosecutor. Um, they thought this, uh, we wanted to add a little bit more teeth to this and make people that, um, violated it more than one time in a, in a, in a certain time period, that it would be a, a more severe offense. It would be an escalating offense uh, for people that didn't get the message. And, uh, we, we thought it was appropriate, uh, we all, the three of us agreed that it would be appropriate to go ahead and make this change. I would also like to bring up that in, in talking to Mrs. Severin, I would also like to bring up that in, in talking to Mrs. Severin, that she wanted me to relate to council that the virtual Mayor's Court is doing very well. It's going very well. And she sends accolades to uh, uh, Mr. Scott Roll. He's doing a great job with this whole situation that we're under. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, moving on to ordinance number fifty-three.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number fifty-three, twenty twenty, for its first, second, and third reading by title only. Please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to amend the contract with Specialized Construction Incorporated for twenty twenty road program to accept and include alternate bid items.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes, so this piece of legislation, uh, just like we discussed in the work session, uh, allows the road program to perform crack seal work on State Route eighty-two. Uh, this work was originally bid as alternate items uh, in the original bid from earlier this spring. Those alternate items are not accepted due to the financial uncertainty of the coronavirus situation. Over the course of the season, we've incurred some savings on the road program, so we're going to apply those savings uh, to the cost of this crack seal work on State Route eighty-two. No overall increase to the budget, which is a good thing. Uh, and as we all know, we want to keep State Route eighty-two in as good a shape for as long as we possibly can. Main road right through the center of town. Uh, this also allows for us to repaint the stripes on the road uh, after we crack seal.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I ask that we pass and post according to law, ordinance number fifty-three, twenty twenty, please.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-three passes. Resolution number fifty-four.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number fifty-four, twenty twenty, for its first, second, and third reading by title only. Please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution authorizing the city engineer to prepare plans, bids, and specifications and further authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids to enter into contracts for the Our Lady of Guadalupe Detention Pond Program, I'm sorry, project.
So this gets us one step closer to the project that Mrs. Tully can attest that we've been talking about for the better part of a decade, if not more. Uh, this will put us out the bid to get the project moving. Uh, Mr. Gelati, anything you'd like to add to that?
Uh, no, that's it. Uh, necessary piece of legislation uh, for us to continue to move forward. Uh, we believe we'll take possession of the property soon, at which point we'll move into the public bid process for the construction of the pond.
And I also asked the million-dollar question in our staff meeting to Mr. Gelati this week, and the question was, will this get done this year?
New my question.
Uh, yes, it will get done as soon as we possibly can. Uh, we believe we're going to have the property soon and we'll move right into the public bid process.
So if Mother Nature cooperates, hopefully this thing gets done and this is a moot point and we can stop talking about it and alleviate a lot of the flooding to the affected parties downhill from there. And uh, that's a great thing that we want to have.
Be a good thing. Yes, it would.
What is your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law, resolution number fifty-four, twenty twenty, please.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Absolutely, yes.
And Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Resolution number fifty-four passes. Resolution number fifty-five.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move to offer ordinance fifty-five, twenty twenty, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to take such steps necessary to apply for funding from the Ohio Public Works Commission, District Eight Public Works Committee, program year thirty-five. Um, I'm going to stop right there. This was supposed to be amended. Am I correct?
Right, after being.
It will be.
Okay, just wanted to double check before I read it all the way. Um, so it's program year thirty-five for Phase Two of the Highland Road resurfacing project.
Mr. Garvis, do you want to make that amendment now that we can discuss?
Yes, yes. I'd like to move to amend ordinance fifty-five, twenty twenty to replace the references to program year thirty-four with program year thirty-five in the title, the two whereas clauses and section one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Gelati, take it away.
Okay, this is for allowing the city to apply for outside funding assistance to repave Highland Road, what we're now calling Highland Road Phase Two. Portion of Highland Road from Valley View Road east to the Twinsburg border. Uh, the road is in poor condition. Uh, there's a high traffic count over there. A lot of people drive it every day, so we think it's a good candidate uh, to receive uh, the outside funding. And um, you've got the uh, uh, the change there to program year thirty-five. Uh, so I think we are good. Uh, if we receive the outside funding uh, from OPWC, it would be a two thousand and twenty-one uh, summer project.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance, uh, resolution fifty-five, twenty twenty, and post the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
And Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Resolution number fifty-five passes. Resolution number fifty-six.
Uh, I apologize. Uh, my dogs are barking. I hope you guys can hear me.
Are they purring, purring, purring this?
Yeah, I asked that all residents of Macedonia not walk past my house with their dogs during council meetings. Anyway, I move to offer resolution number fifty-six, twenty twenty, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So we had two openings in the Parks and Recreation Department. Uh, Ms. Luxo has expressed interest in one of those uh, remaining positions. Uh, if anyone else is interested in the, the last position that's available, you can go to macedonia dot O H dot U S under the H R tab and they'll have information provided on there to join that committee and uh, we would welcome that. But Ms. Luxo, like I said before, was showing an interest in this. I think she'd be a great addition to it. Uh, lived in the community for quite some time and I think she'll do very well with you guys and uh, you'll, you'll enjoy your time with her, so. Any further discussion?
Um, our, our first meeting, or your first meeting will be, uh, I see that you're in the crowd, Ms. Luxco. Um, so our first meeting will be next Wednesday at uh, six o'clock at Pavilion Three. And uh, Mayor, you, I assume you have her email address. You can get that to me.
I sure can. I will get that to you as soon as possible.
All right, thank you. And I, I would also like to hear Ms. Traska read the, the title.
All right. A resolution confirming the appointment by the mayor of Barbara Luxco to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Thank you. And what is your pleasure?
I move that uh, we pass and post resolution number fifty-six, twenty twenty, and the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
And Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Resolution number fifty-six passes and uh, welcome to the commission, Mrs. Luxo.
Thank you for volunteering. We look forward to working with you.
Okay, resolution number fifty-seven.
I move to offer resolution number fifty-seven, twenty twenty, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution confirming the appointment by the mayor of Matthew Ferraro to the City of Macedonia Boarding Zoning and Building Code Appeals.
So Mr. Ferraro had uh, reached out to me about an interest in the Parks and Rec Commission and had sent his resume over. Upon review of his resume, he has a vast engineering background and I suggested to him perhaps it would be a better fit to go on to the B Z A, of which he agreed. That's why you're seeing him here today. And again, I think he'll be another great fit to that, uh, that board, so. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I move to adopt resolution number fifty-seven, twenty twenty, and post the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
And Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro, congratulations and welcome to the B Z A and thank you for passing that, Council. Definitely appreciate that. Are there any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none. Is there correspondence from the clerk?
No.
Thank you. So we'll move into the Mayor's Report. Uh, the Mayor's Court Cash Control Report for the month of July was nineteen thousand fifty-five dollars. From August first to August thirty-first, the uh, court reporting deposits were fifteen thousand seven hundred seventy-one dollars and eighty-five cents. I'm going to touch on a few things this evening because uh, it was kind of talked about a little earlier with council about things that come up on Facebook. And what I'd recommend to folks in the future is if you have a problem or a concern that you contact the city, Facebook's not always the best avenue to do that. It's more of a, a tool that people use in other areas, but uh, there's one that came up just yesterday where there was a large pothole that I was not aware of, the city wasn't aware of, and I believe that there was some type of undermining on the road that caused it to sink down and it was significant. Um, had someone not tagged me on Facebook, I would not have known about it. We wouldn't be able to address it. So I'm asking everyone out there that if you, if you see something, you know, you can call us, you can email us. We have an app. There's so many ways to communicate with us to let us know about things. We would definitely appreciate it if you, if you contact City Hall in some way, shape, or form, especially if it's something that's dangerous. Uh, we do have the non-emergency line here for our dispatch center. It's three-three oh four six eight, one-two-three-four. So if you see something like that, that can cause harm to someone or, or in any other way uh, cause damage to a vehicle, please contact us and let us know that way. That'll lead into the next thing I want to touch on. There's been a lot of reports from people that have created Facebook pages. I want to be crystal clear about when something happens or information needs to be passed, we're always going to pass it and pass it to you, the public, in the most clean and neat way we can. We've had a, a wave of theft in the city. It's very disheartening to me to think that it came out through a Facebook page, but I'm going to put it out to everyone now kind of what has happened over the past several years that we're aware of and we're working on. Uh, we did have a bobcat skid steer get stolen from our recreation center. Uh, we also had a lawnmower get stolen from the, from the parks area. Most recently, there was some individuals that had gone into the park and cut off the catalytic converters off of some of our trucks and, and left a nice little mess underneath the truck and obviously left us with trucks that cannot function. We are looking into those things. The city is not going to comment too much on those because obviously there's an investigation going into that. Uh, there were some uh, issues with our cameras. It was suggested out there in the public that, you know, the cameras weren't turned on or the police didn't have access to those cameras. That's completely untrue. Um, again, it's an investigation. We're not going to go too in-depth with what's going on with that. But we are looking into it and we are working hard to figure out who, what, where, when, and why. Uh, just on Labor Day, we had three and a half inches in our, our beautiful storm that took place. And many of you are probably sleeping and awoken by the uh, thunder and lightning. Prior to that, the week before, we did have a flood in our community room. Uh, the sump pump in the basement of City Hall had backed up. We unfortunately had to make an insurance claim. Um, it has destroyed every floor down there, uh, large portions of the drywall, all the carpeting. So we, we are working through that right now. We've had a company out that's coming in and sanitizing. And the thing that, that hurts the most about that is a lot of that was new flooring that we got through grants or, you know, we worked very hard over many years to, to make that room as beautiful as possible. And I guess it comes at a time when it's, it's, there's never a good time for this to happen, but the fact that City Hall is still closed and the seniors aren't utilizing the community room, it kind of works out for us. So we're gonna, we're gonna put that all back together. So the next time our seniors come back for our senior lunches, you're going to see another new floor and a beautiful new room that I can assure you will be sanitized and, and clean and ready for you to assume what we used to do. So hopefully that day comes sooner than later, but um, who knows what's going on with the coronavirus. And as Mrs. Tully alluded to earlier, uh, Summit County was moved back to red today, so that's not, not a good sign for us. But I'm hopeful and I, I hope that in the future we'll, we'll get back to somewhat of normalcy, which we all want. I also want to bring up our senior doorstop delivery. Since May, the volunteers that take the meals to our seniors have delivered, get this, two, over two thousand meals to our seniors. That is an amazing, amazing thing that people are doing to help out the seniors, especially the ones in need that may not be able to cook for themselves or maybe just want a hot meal that we can bring to them. And I want to thank all the people that volunteer and, and deliver that and take their personal time and their personal vehicles to deliver those.
Nice, the mayor's buffered.
A week in September and I'm sorry?
You buffered.
Was I doing the max headroom?
Yeah.
You, you weren't even moving. You were frozen like a popsicle.
That's great. So the fall food truck, uh, and, and Mr. Check, I'm sure you'll talk more about this, but I wanted to allude to the fact that yesterday we had the um, Cleveland Cookie Dough Company. And once I had made mention of that to my six-year-old son, we went up there and got our, our cookie dough and uh, he was bouncing on the couches at, I think about nine-thirty, ten o'clock still. So it was a nice sugary treat that kept my little boy up later than he had, he should have been. So thank you for that. It was delicious, but I know next time to not give that to him that late at night. I had a call today with the county. They're talking about the census. Uh, thankfully Macedonia is one of the trending highest uh, communities in Summit County. We're at eighty-three percent. I love the C S B at ninety percent or higher, uh, or even a hundred percent. So if you haven't filled out your census forms or, or done your due diligence with that, I would ask that you continue to do that. Tomorrow marks a, a very um, tough date for me in my life. It's, it's the, it's nine eleven. Uh, we all know what took place on that day and I, I just ask those to remember who lost their lives to that senseless, the senseless acts that took place on September eleventh and uh, take a moment to say a prayer for those that, you know, were affected by that, that senseless act. And last but not least, please don't drive distracted. Put the phone down, drive the car, stay safe, keep yourself safe and everyone around you safe. Okay, we'll move right into committee reports.
Uh, we had our first uh, committee meeting with the, the new director. I think it went well. He gave us a good introduction of himself and what uh, he has plans uh, for his tenure here. Um, we were down two members, but now uh, we're happy to see that we have another one. So next week will be our second meeting. Um, Mr. Chaddock, if you could reserve Shelter Three for us, please. Get that, I didn't, I didn't put in a request for that, so if you could reserve that, that's where we'll be. Pending the weather, I guess even if it rains, we'll still be there as long as there's no tornadoes. So uh, I, thanks to the members uh, who are still in the group and are showing up and, you know, wearing masks and socially distancing and, and uh, moving on with a new chapter in Parks and Rec Department. So uh, we'll see everyone next week.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Mayor, can I say something in reference to uh, Jessica's report?
Absolutely.
Um, I went to that meeting as, as an observer and I was very impressed with uh, Jason's uh, action plan. Um, he's well-spoken. He gets his point across in the proper manner. And I think along with Jessica, as she said, we're headed in a, in a really good direction there. So I just want to commend uh, Jessica and the rest of the commission uh, who assisted you in making this selection. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move into department reports and. Okay, we'll move into department reports, and first up is Director Nadevange.
Well, you changed it up a little bit. Thank you, Mayor. We're coming off of a successful baseball season for the summertime. The fields, all five fields were nearly used seven days a week. We only canceled three times, if I remember correctly, due to rain. Other times if we had rain during the day, after an hour, we were able to get out there onto the fields and have them groomed and ready for any play for later on in that day. So it's really nice to have that because in the past, if we had rain at nine in the morning, we were closing them for a four o'clock game. We just weren't able to have them out there. So the fields are doing good. We're starting fall ball right now, so looking good to being able to host them as well on four fields that'll be used at that time. And then, you know, Jason, he's going to mention probably about fall with soccer coming up and flag football that we'll be prepping for in the field. So you'll have that one. But other than that, we're doing our stormwater right now with our, completed our ditching for the most part, just a few more work orders that are out there that are popping up now, especially after the rain that we had on Monday. And speaking of the rain that we had on Monday, as the mayor said, we had three and a half inches. Him and I were able to visit multiple properties during that time. There's some new backups that are occurring, or some that have been enduring some of a different nature, not all of stormwater that we're working on to try to alleviate for these residents. But at the same time, a little silver lining was, and not to discredit anyone else who is, you know, having a backup, but there are other areas in the city that were always a constant spot that we had to attend to that are no longer backing up. So that's good to see that this, you know, we've had, we've made strides in, you know, moving forward to make improvements, and we're going to continue to do so. So that was one silver lining to see in the three and a half inches that we got. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Nadevange, and I also thank you for spending your Labor Day with me trudging through a lot of water. And I see the blue tape on your windows there. I think you might have missed a spot on your trim, so you might want to.
I still got to do a second coat yet.
Okay, moving on to Director Chaddick.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll, I'll also say I appreciate all the kind words from everybody. It's been a very welcoming atmosphere for this first month that I've been able to join the city. It's been, been great. Got to meet with a lot of people, have a lot of good conversations. Want to start by welcoming Ms. Lusko to our Parks and Rec Commission. Welcome aboard. We look forward to meeting you next week and taking our, our first steps forward in this new journey together. I wanted to highlight what Mayor Molnar mentioned before about the Cleveland Cookie Dough Company. Here's the lesson that we learned. We have to buy the kids smalls, not larges, and then they'll go to bed by eight-thirty. So that's the trick. Anyway, great turnout. We had ninety-three orders come in through the course of the three hours the food truck was out there. The company got back to us this morning and just elaborated on how successful the event was for them. Great turnout, consistent crowd, and I'd like to highlight, this was a COVID-friendly event. Everybody was socially distanced and wearing masks, which was great to see outside. And we're very thankful for that. I will send some information to you guys, and you'll also see it on our social media for continued pop-up food truck events. We're looking right now to book one a week through the month of October. So you'll be able to see a lot of variation of food and be able to get a schedule of that. We currently have four additional ones booked. We have the original steaks and hoagies coming in, burrito tacos, Mana Food Truck. And pardon me for saying this. I didn't make up this name, so y'all are just going to have to deal with this part. Betty's Bomb Ass Burgers. And that's the one that I, that's the one I looked at the menu, and let me tell you, the menu is, is really good-looking. So I'm excited about what they're going to bring to the table. Maintenance-wise through the facility, we have replaced our pool pump in the main pool. That got completed yesterday afternoon. Special thanks to Steve Plata and Jeremiah for coming in and helping us out with that. It was great to have them here. We also had phase two of our hot tub inspections completed, so we have located some of the leaks going on within the hot tub. So now we'll have phase three of testing going on, so we can get a little bit more view inside the hot tub itself. That way we can come up with our game plan for getting some repairs completed. We are getting close to selecting a vendor for our second floor flooring project that's going, going on to replace some of the bad flooring upstairs. And as Director Nadevange mentioned before, we have all softball and soccer getting ready to kick off, pun intended, and then next week. We're excited about that, trying to offer our youth some activities here within the community. And Steph has done a great job of conjuring ways to provide appropriate COVID protocols to keep our participants as safe as possible, keep social distancing within the fields themselves. We're very excited about where we're going here, and I appreciate everyone's time tonight. Thank you.
And thank you for supporting our local Utes. We do appreciate that. And additionally, I'll also add with the, the carpeting that we're replacing upstairs at the rec center, that's also a trip hazard as part of the reason why we replaced that now. We did budget for that, but it has been in disrepair for quite some time. So thank you for kicking that off and getting that taken care of. Okay, Director Varis.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to remind residents that the extended filing deadline for Macedonia income tax return to be sent to the finance department is October fifteenth. It's approaching quickly, and that's the end of my report, Mayor.
You're muted, Mayor.
I'm sorry. Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to report the hydrant crew has completed the two townships. They are working in Macedonia. Progress has slowed a bit as these are high school students. They have returned to class. Crew got cut in half because of school obligations. They're still out there. If you encounter some discoloration of your water when they're in your area, run it till it's clear, and you should be fine. I need to remind everyone, as you've heard numerous times tonight, COVID is still out there. We are still dealing with it on a daily basis in the fire department. Please wear your mask. Please be careful when you're out there. Don't let it control your life, but just be careful who you see, what you do, what you touch. Good personal hygiene. And as I promised a couple months ago, at the next council meeting, you will see three pieces of legislation relative to our eight-hundred radio system, and then we'll get that ball certainly rolling. I'm just waiting on some final quotes right now. End of report, Mayor.
And just to echo your thoughts there, that's part of the reason why City Hall is still closed, part of the reason why we're meeting virtually. I would ask everyone to remember that our safety forces operate out of this building. We're taking every precaution we possibly can to keep our safety forces safe. We don't want to have any potential of anything being brought into the building and potentially having that infection with our, with our, our first responders. So it's part of the reason why we're doing it this way, and we'll see how the future goes and what it holds for us in terms of being virtual or whether or not we meet in person again. Okay, next up is Lieutenant Yakapovich.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I wanted to mention is we all know schools back in session, so we need to encourage drivers to be a little more cautious. You know, the children are at the bus stops. The other thing is I wanted to talk, talk a little bit about the rain we had on Monday. We were able to, we had significant flooding in a lot of different streets, and we were able to put up temporary signs, road clothes, put up cones. But for some reason, we still had drivers going around those signs. And on North Bedford Road, we actually had a vehicle get stuck, and water was coming into the vehicle, and the water was significant depth and flow that we had to call the fire department in to extract those people from that vehicle. You know, you hear it over and over from the time you were a kid, driving, starting. Do not drive on roads that are covered in water. You don't know what the depth is. Later on, we took some pictures of where the water was on some of the signage, and then we went back and measured. It was over two feet deep. That's significant. So I would just ask drivers to be a little more cautious, especially when approaching a roadway that has water. End of report, Mayor.
And I'd also like to thank the police department for their, their quick action and getting cones up and helping out with that because that water came hard and fast, and your, your quick response to that definitely made it a lot safer for the people that were traveling that day. So thank you for that, and thank your, your officers for that as well. We do appreciate that. Okay, next up is Director Collins.
I just wanted to say that I hope everybody is happy and healthy, both physically and emotionally, and I look forward to seeing all of you in person, hopefully sooner than later. Other than that, I have no report. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, sir.
You were fading out again, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm at City Hall, and I thought I had a great connection, but apparently I'm fading.
Thanks, Mayor. In order to maintain some form of normalcy for our employees, HR has planned a safe and socially distant way to provide flu shots and biometric testing for our employees and their spouses for November second of this year. Also, HR is working on an employee appreciation event in October. Our medical provider had provided us with some money that we normally use for our health fare, and we can't have a health fare this year, and I want to not lose that money, and I also want to be able to spend it on our employees. That's it for my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Director Godaddy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just add, since we've had a number of new BZA appointments, I know Building Commissioner Monaco has been working to get them the basics so they know what they're doing and can kind of hit the ground running. Hopefully, once the pandemic subsides, we can do some in-person group training with the BZA to make sure everybody's up to date on the laws. Regarding Our Lady of Guadalupe, I just wanted to add that the Planning Commission did take a look at the proposed lot split last month. To my understanding, there were no issues with it, so I'm anticipating that will also be approved formally this month as part of the process that the city has to go through. And the last thing I will add is just another thought of appreciation for Mr. Cole. Community Focus did have a meeting at Shelter Three at the park last week, and everybody from all the communities was very appreciative of him, and I just thank him for his genuine service to the community.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any unfinished business?
This is Jan. About the water and sewers and that, besides emails that we've received that have been asked face-to-face also, who do the residents call? Because they seem to be referred to the sewer district. And everybody probably got their NEOSRD bill this week. So they're wondering, am I still muted?
No, you're good.
There, the question is, who do we refer them to because they're getting a little frustrated? Is it the sewer department? What is that money they're paying go to to help them get resolution? You know, if, who do they go to? That's what they're asking for.
So Director Nadevange and I deal with this a lot, and it's, it's a loaded question because a lot of times those two coincide. So the, the simple answer would be is if you see sewage, you contact DOSS. So Summit County handles anything that has to do with, with raw sewage. Anything stormwater-related can be the city or any RST. So we always help to facilitate that. If you're unsure, just contact the city, and we'll get out there and we'll do what we can. Again, if it's something that's dangerous or needs immediate attention, please contact the non-emergency number, and they'll be able to direct either to us or the appropriate entity. But again, if you have sewage, it's DOSS. Stormwater is either the city or any RST. It just depends on where they're at and what the situation is. So if there's uncertainty, just contact us, and we will definitely steer them in the, in the right path.
Thank you. And then are they ever going to address the bottom of Port Shore and Crow? Those guys actually have to be really busy, but are they ever going to fix that?
All parts going in place with that. They're trying to. My blinking. They're working on it now. There's a lot of things coming in place, and I'll be able to give a report on that. I may even have Summit County come in and do that soon, but I don't have a definitive answer right now. They're, they are showing improvements with what the project they did over there on Crow behind the homes on the, what would that be, the south side of the road. So they have shown improvement in there. They haven't been pumping out as much as they used to. So there, there's positive news coming out of it, but there's other things they need to do. And once we get closer, we'll, we'll talk more about that.
Okay, because the people down at that end, well, everybody that drives by it always asks, why is the guy driving so sleepy? But, and then you always talk about down text and drive, don't text distract, but I'd like to add one more thing. Those of you who took drivers at, what does a yellow line mean if it's on your side of the road? What does a double yellow line mean? I have been passed by more people on Shepherd Hills and Route Eighty-two where there are yellow lines. So I would ask it to realize that means it's a no-passing zone for your safety as well as the person you're trying to get around. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business?
Mayor Joe Gilotti here. I do have a brief report.
Go ahead.
Golden Link Boulevard, right in, right out, is open.
I got a resident.
Totally forgot to mention that tonight.
I got a resident who called me to say thank you. They were so excited because they've been here since that development opened. So they're, they're just ecstatic that it's now the safety of being able to get in that way. So thank you.
Thank you. That's good to hear.
And I thought, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought we said in the last meeting, maybe I'm wrong, my timeline just screwed up, but I, we do so many of these interviews, I just lose track of where I said.
That's okay. I figured that happened. I just wanted to make sure we didn't overlook that here on tonight's meeting.
He said the beach.
Any other unfinished business?
I just want to acknowledge, as, as school starts our first week here, in what is most likely the most challenging school year of any, anyone that's in school, teachers, the administrators, the staff, the parents, and the children, who are all going through something crazy right now, and I'm sure everybody knows someone that is dealing with school. So I hope everyone, you know, is, is kind and compassionate with, with all the, the parent friends that they have, or if you have kids in school, it's, it's a really tough time. I'm totally stressed out about it, and I don't have any kids, but all my friends have kids, and it's crazy. Nobody is having a good time. So I just, everyone, my thoughts are with you, and, and good luck to all the teachers and, and the parents and the students and the staff out there. That's all.
And I would agree with you, and I think teachers are some of the most fantastic people on the face of the earth, so I do support them, and especially the ones that are teaching virtually. This is very difficult for all them, so please show your support for them because they, they surely appreciate it. Okay, any new business? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Before there's a second to that, I'm sure either council president or you, Mayor, wanted to remind everybody about the upcoming levy.
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped too fast. Yes, the levy that's upcoming for November, again, we've, we've talked about this in our previous meetings, but this is a renewal. This is not a new tax. This is not an increase. It's something we've been utilizing since, I believe, nineteen sixty. So I want to be very clear about that. We'll put more things out about that as we get closer to the election date, but this is a renewal, not a new tax, and it's something that the, the city desperately needs to maintain our functions. So.
Well, what we will be doing is.
Your support on, Mrs. Tully, anything you want to add?
Yeah, be contacting Mr. Varis to set up our budget meeting so that we can discuss in details what would be the impact if it didn't pass. I think people sometimes think, eh, you don't really need it. But if you can see the things that it would impact and hear about them and how they would impact yourself because of service, police, fire, the administration, rec center, I mean, there are a lot of things that it touches. So it's an important issue for us to keep on the front burner. Again, it's a renewal, not an increase.
Thank you for opening that discussion, Mr. Godaddy.
I will second the aforementioned motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned. Have a nice evening.
Are you ready for football?
Have a nice evening and just.
Good, everybody.
Look at that, Jason, right on time.